My name is Simone Bright and I currently serve as the 2013-2014 Student Government Association President. First, I want to welcome you all to this time hall meeting and also thank you all for being here and coming out and voicing your opinions. We also want to thank our administrators for taking the time out of their schedule to be here as well. So first, we're going to ask our AWS president, his name is Megan Henderson, to lead us in prayer and then we're going to introduce our administrators.
Good evening. Everyone bow your heads, please. Dear God, we thank you for this University of Southern. God, we thank you for our family. God, we thank you for the legacy and traditions of this institution. God, we ask for blessings for our university, our administrators, our students, and we ask that you continue to help us grow and thrive. God, give us the knowledge and power and always to help us keep Southern University great. In the Lord's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Now, I'm going to introduce our administrators. First, we have President of the Southern University System, Dr. Ronald Mason. We have Chancellor of the Southern University at Baton Rouge School, excuse me, Dr. Jane Lorenz. This is in a specific order. We have Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, Dr. Ella Kelly. The Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, Dr. Virginia Peoples. The Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Dr. Brandon Dumis. Mr. Eli Guillory, Director of Facility Services. Ms. Tracy Abraham, Director of Housing. Mr. Kevin Johnson, Deputy Administrator. Chief Jocelyn Johnson, the Interim Chief of Police. Dr. William Broussard, Athletic Director. Mr. Marcus Coleman, Dean of Students. Mr. Raymond Clark, Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success. And Mr. Lawrence Brown, Director of Food Services. Now, we're going to have... Now, we're going to have words from our student leaders. Our AWS President is here. I believe our sophomore class President is here as well. And there, Ms. Southern, of course, is here. They're going to come up and tell you some of their plans for the upcoming semester.
Hello again, everyone. As stated, I am Megan Elise Henderson, a senior apparel merchandising and textile major from the splendid city of Shreve, Fort Louisiana, and I currently serve as the Association for Women Students President here at the great Southern University. All right, for the spring semester, the Association for Women Students will be hosting several powerful programs in which we'd love your participation. Our week is scheduled for February 16th through the 21st where we will continue to uplift the women of Southern University through powerful programs that are exciting and new while we hold true to our roots. We seek to spend time with the students during this time with regular meetings, and we also want to host meetings in the dorms to get the concerns of the students on campus as well. I am so grateful for you all, for all the love you've shown thus far, and I'm very happy to stand here and serve the women of Southern University. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I am Ayanna Spivey and I serve as the 83rd Miss Southern University. First, I would like to thank everyone for their support in helping out my new organization, Community Outreach Programs, also known as COPS. I know it was a hard transition moving with this change, but we were able to raise last semester over $4,000 continuing to support St. Jude's Children's Hospital as well as the new initiatives of the VR Sickle Cell and Kidney Foundation. We will be continuing to raise funds this semester for COPS. February 13th, we will be having a Sweetheart cocktail along with SGA and the Beta Sigma Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha in the Catalonian Ballroom. And I'm also working on my LAST platform, which is the Miss Teen SU pageant on March 21st, which will be featuring high school campus queens in the neighboring areas. Lastly, I will be traveling to California along with Madam President to work with the Los Angeles Southern Alumni Chapter to help bring Southern to young high school students and hopefully bring future JAGs to the bluff. I look forward for your all's support and look forward to more events such as a date auction as well as the Chaos Party along with the SU NPHC. Thank you again for your continuous support.
We have, uh, we are teaming with the Student Affairs to bring some lecture speakers to the universities to talk about success and building your brand and how they reached and achieved their goals. We are also partnering with Career Services to launch the myedu.com website. It's a website where you build a profile similar to a Facebook profile, but instead of friends coming to see your profile, it's actually employers that come and look at you and they can offer you jobs on there or do Skype interviews and things like that via that website. We will be having a voters informational about running for office and what it entails to be an SGA official. We're having a program called Dear Sally Mae, and we have a man who will come out and talk to you about taking our loans and what it means and not to be afraid to take our loans and the best options of paying your loans back. And last but not least, of course, we're going to have the Spring Fest activities. Next, I want to bring up my Vice President, Ms. Sarah Martin, and she will tell you about what's coming up with the Senate.
Good evening. A few things that the Senate will be working on this spring semester. The first of which should be the Student Government Association legal reformation. And all it is, is the Constitution, the bylaws, and the election code are going to be reformed so that student government can work more efficiently. We've found over the years with some of us and our experience in SGA and the things that we experienced when we learned the basics about student government, that we can do a lot better with managing student and student leadership if we could get our laws a little bit more up to date and a little bit more understandable. And so, we'll be working on that. The other most important thing that probably concerns students the most is the committees that we have that are specific to different initiatives on campus. Campus beautification being one, campus safety, childcare, and a few others that we have a committee for in the Senate specifically so that we can take care of the needs that students are concerned about. We started talking to some of the leaders that are sitting up here on this table so we can start collaborating with students about what those things are and writing legislation to exact the changes that students need to see during the upcoming semester and for the future of JAG coordination. And those are just some of the things that we're aiming for with the Senate. Thank you.
I've just been going through some of these, and I think it's probably... There are a lot of questions that would go to a number of the administrators that are here, but what I'd like to do is go through it. I have about 10 or 12, so I don't know how long y'all want to be here tonight. Some of them are closely related, others are not. I'm not taking them in any particular order. And then what we'll do is, is I think maybe in some cases have some of the administrators respond to those questions. First one is, why does it seem as if the staff isn't knowledgeable about their positions? And in parentheses, perhaps there should be more job training about their positions to improve efficiency. We agree with that in fact, and I may be taking away from President Mason's what would be a response to this too, but as you know, human resources is now a system-wide function. The Human Resources Department has just, in the past several months, hired a training... It's a director, President Mason, it's a training director, Ms. Benjamin, and her responsibility is to go out and not, but she is in the process of developing a training program for all administrative personnel within not only this campus but all the campuses within the system. And one of the things that we're talking about is the need for cross-training, the need for our individuals to know other persons' positions, responsibilities, and duties. As you know, we've gone through a period over the past four years of budget cuts that resulted in a reduction of staff. We've had retirements, we've had retirement incentives where staff and faculty members... We're now at the point where we have to start filling those positions again. So we know that customer service is an issue there for a number of reasons. In some cases, we lose because of somebody opting to take the retirement incentive or key position. If we're able to start realizing an increase in funding, we're able to start filling some of these vacant positions that are out there because of a lack of funding. But the HR department has developed a plan. They have hired a Director of Training, and that person is tasked with the responsibility of going through and she's come to us. She's met with various campus chancellors. She attends my staff meetings on a regular basis, so she represents the system HR responsibilities at my staff meetings, campus staff meetings, and ready to share with her what our priorities are. So we understand that we're moving in that direction, and it becomes training. I've also directed my Vice Chancellor of Finance Administration to think all of our staff members now have been directed to start receiving ID cards, and we are mandating that every staff member have an ID card open, visible when dealing with the students. So as you go in, you meet with the various personnel, you should know who you're talking to. You should be able to identify them so that when you have issues and you have concerns, it's not just saying someone, but know who that is, know who that person is, and share that information with us. We can only act on the feedback that we receive from you, and that feedback has to be as specific as possible so that we can address those issues. Any other? Gone? I got a bunch of them now. Okay. Why is there poor interdepartmental communications? Like calling Cassius' office and they literally tell me that's not our department with underlying zero insight. I think that, again, relates to what we're talking about in terms of training. I think a lot of these are related. I kind of go through them and think, you know, rather than try to repeat the answers again. This one is addressed to myself and Dr. Dumis. Again, poor customer service when I call Southern. Someone answers the phone, 90% of the time, the staff is uncooperative, not very helpful. Okay, those three. And, you know, we fought at Southern for a long time. It's something we tried to address. I think some departments are very... Much more proactive in terms of addressing those issues and try to be more helpful. A lot of other instances, we just, you know, we just have individuals that we have to weed out if necessary, but also have to train them into proper customer service. I was just sharing with President Mason at the SAD, responsibility and obligation on this Saturday to attend Fuel Services for one of our registrar personnel, Mr. Cecil Houston. And one of the things that we kept getting back in terms of Facebook posts and everything was Mr. Houston's responsiveness to students and the fact that he was one of the people that you could count on to help when you went into the registrar's office. And it sort of struck a chord with me that, you know, here's someone that we've lost that was so important and so valuable to us that could lend a lesson to other individuals in the campus. So I just shared with President Mason, I have these own personnel I've shared with so far, but we're going to do it. But we're going to drive this customer service thing. We're going to institute a Cecil Houston Customer Service Award. You know, and it'll be a cash award, a significant cash award for individuals so that we have to provide an incentive to our staff people to provide that customer service. We're going to do that. We'll make that award at the end of this semester so that we'll get something out quickly so that it'll start. So, you know, so that staff members will know that we're serious, we, you know, we're concerned about it, and here's an opportunity for you to demonstrate good customer service and be recognized for that at the end of the semester. So we're trying to do everything we can to increase that realization. The number of our staff members are working in a situation where in the past several years they've had absolutely zero pay raises, in many cases furloughs where they've lost a lot of money. But we still have to, we have to move forward with solid customer service. Next question is, why after two years are my out-of-state fees not waived? Most schools consider you a resident after two years of attending the school. You know, those, you know, the out-of-state fee policies are established by the Board. I think in accordance with Board of Regents guidelines in terms of what we have to do and what Louisiana does in terms of recognizing out-of-state fees. Every state is different. I know there are some states that let you stay one year and all of a sudden you are free from out-of-state fee waivers if you establish a residence. Unfortunately, we're tied into those. And so, once you come in, the only way that you can gain residence status is to actually be out of school for one full year without having earned, and someone correct me if I'm wrong in this, but not having earned more than six hours in a 12-month period and established a residence and employment within the state of Louisiana. And it's only after that point that you can come in and apply for residency and have your out-of-state fees waived. So we're, you know, it's something that we're sort of tied to by the regulations. You know, maybe it's something, Mr. President, we can look at in terms of any adjustments that can be made and whether it takes going to the, you know, to the legislature or to the Board of Regents. But the legislature's taken a very hard stance on out-of-state fees. In the past, they've even dictated the increase in out-of-state fees because they consider the resources that Louisiana provides being for Louisiana students. We know that there are a lot of issues, and the increase has created a significant burden on students. You know, I've met with students early even this morning that are trying to figure out how can they stay in school and still be able to meet the obligation of out-of-state fees. So I understand your concern on that. Next question is, why is it that financial aid is the most unorganized department on campus? And why are they so rude to us? I almost would defer that to... To Mr. Clark. But let me, you know, you know, there's not an easy answer to that. There's not a stock answer to that. You know, I believe it's, I believe they're good and, you know, good people in the financial aid office, and there are some that get frustrated and don't respond as well. We have to address it. You know, again, it goes back to getting the feedback from you and getting feedback on the individuals themselves. You know, we're, you know, we're still going to push the idea of customer service, push the idea of rewarding those that exhibit good customer service. Mr. Clark, do you have anything else you want to add to that? No. Next question is, when will the utilities be fixed permanently? Water is important for many reasons. It is not acceptable for a student who is paid for housing to continuously and randomly have to schedule a bath. Mr. Guillory might be able to answer that. I think we've made significant progress in terms of utilities. Let me tell you about this campus. This campus is... Saddled with an underground system that has been there for years and years and years and years. It's the title of the system, and Mr. Guillory can correct me at any time, you just jump in. And some of those pipes are what are called old terracotta pipes. In a lot of instances, those things deteriorate. They deteriorate over a large number of years. A lot of times, you don't know it. It's underground. You don't realize what's happening until all of a sudden there's some water pressure on it. There's a leak. You go in, you fix that, the leak comes out somewhere else. Now, we know, I know that there have been, most recently, a lot of work completed on some of the underground piping to replace some. I'm not sure whether it was a shielded hot water pipe.
It was mainly the hot water system. It was a hot water system that was put in back in 1989 without... Who are my, by short hand, engineering majors? Okay, you may hear the term cathodic protection to keep metals from rusting. Well, to save money at the university, the state decided to save $250,000 not putting in the cathodic protection to keep the pipes from rusting and pre-insulated underground pipes. So that was removed, and back in the early 90s, mid 90s, the pipes started rusting, and we started developing underground leaks, and we had to go back and request roughly $5, $6 million in order to replace that. So the new heating system that you have in three-thirds of the, three-fourths of the campus is your new heating system. This existing system is going back to the dormitory area, and we do have leaks in that area, in that system with the underground pipes. But we have pipes that were installed back in the 1940s, which is for our sanitary station system. And it's terracotta lines, and those lines are deteriorating as well. So you're looking at multiple of $20 to $50 million in order to correct our underground sanitary sewer lines and our water lines throughout the campus. We have electrical underground lines as well, underground duct banks that's going, taking the electrical power to the various buildings and to your transformers and to the switchgear in the buildings. And those switchgears are aged, and they can go out any moment now. But that's one of the problems that we address as we put in capital aid requests for funding in order for those funds to become available. We may go through some emergency board to request funding, but usually it may take five to 10 years for the funds to become available. I know when I was a student, I graduated in '82, and some of the same things that I observed when I was a student still exist. But with preventative maintenance and deferred maintenance, we are taking care of some of those items. But it's a large cost factor in order to correct all those underground infrastructure issues.
Thank you. The second part of that question is addressed to me. It says, where do you see the campus in five years? Excellent question. It's, first of all, I see a lot of things that are here gone. Another question that's coming up, and we'll address it. The question was, when will the dormitories be demolished, the old dormitories and the no-y triangle be demolished? What's the schedule on that? I think those should be done within maybe a month or two at the most?
I would say at least three months.
Three months. They, you know, I think they've gotten most of the intensive part done in terms of the asbestos mitigation.
That is correct.
And the next step, of course, is to actually tear down. Dr. Dumis can address, I guess, some ideas in terms of how that piece of property is going to be used. But I believe we have plans on initially using that as green space for additional exercise and maybe even intramural fields, so, and, you know, tracks so that there are things that we can do in that to make it accessible to you for use and long-range maybe to expand the reces, of course, if we're able to do that in terms of...
Swimming pool.
Swimming pool. So those are the, so that is that are planned on. We have a lot of buildings on this campus that are vacant that we have to decide whether we have the resources to either renovate them for usage or to tear them down. A lot of those on this part of the campus. The other thing that we're sorely lacking is in terms of monies for not only maintenance but renovation and the incorporation of technology into all of the classrooms. So what I see in five years for this university is either through funds gained through the legislature or eventually going into a capital campaign fund with the support of the system in coming in and being able to go in and address classroom space, being able to address renovation of the classrooms, being able to bring technology in the classrooms. You know, see us moving more into a technology-based university so that, you know, the students will be able to come in and whether it's, you know, ideally, I'd like to see us getting to the technology being used for all the classes and whether it's iPads or some type of tablets or some type of electronic equipment that we begin to make better use of, but it has to be an environment, technological environment on the campus that supports that. So that's, you know, that's kind of where we're going in terms of that. We'd like to add some additional facilities in terms of athletics. We know that the volleyball team needs a place. We know that soccer, not volleyball, but soccer needs a place to play. We need to improve some of those facilities for our women's sports. So there are a number of things that we're doing. Just to throw something out as an aside, too, part of what a lot of people consider the campus is Harding Boulevard and the property on the opposite side of the campus from us. You know, that's an area that we're not neglecting in terms of the aesthetics of the campus also. There are three or four sites on that side that we believe that we can do something about. We're waiting on some private investment dollars. You know, I've been told that the Villa Apartments, that there's a possibility of a purchase on that being finalized soon and a renovation of the Villa Apartments, that we eliminate that ISO once you come on campus. I had a, I had a visit this afternoon from a gentleman who owned the, that little strip right next to the Capital House with the, all the old front-end loaders and all that stuff. So we knew that there was an issue with the property and who owned that. I passed by on my way back from a, from a talk at the end this afternoon and saw something being cleaned up over there, and I said, oh, maybe, you know, maybe something is happening. I walked into my office and the gentleman I've known for a long time who owns part of that property was in there to tell me that he had just gotten an eviction notice for the person that was occupying his part of that property. So it's being cleaned up by court order, and that's being done. The gentleman still owns the other part of it, so we're working with the Senate to get that part cleaned up. It's, you know, it's still, even though it's not on campus, we consider it as a part of the campus. So there are a number of things that we'd like to do. The property with the Alumni Association owns right by the Reg stick sculpture. Working with Alumni Associations, see what we can do in terms of that area. What you will see soon on the vacant property by the ROTC buildings, that parking lot now that's used by the Law School, there's going to be, it's, what do we call it, Mr. President, is a new innovation center? It's going up, it's, Eli?
It'll be a cultural center.
Cultural center that's going up right on the river. I think we're probably missing still just a few hundred thousand dollars in funding for that. The plans have been drawn. Most of the money is at the state level now, but what you will see is an additional center next to the Museum of Art. That will house a cultural center with meeting space, with lecture room space, with reception space, designed to eventually have a pavilion overlooking the river. So those are, you know, those are things that are on the drawing boards. It's been discussion. We know that parking is a problem. There have been discussions for a number of years about a parking facility on campus. That becomes quite expensive, and it's been a question of whether we can generate enough revenue to retire the bonds necessary to build a parking lot. Okay? Where would you build it? And where would it be most convenient? So those are the things that when I say, where do we see the campus in five years? Physically, there are a lot of things that are going on, a lot of plans. We have a master plan for the campus. I think it should be a fluid plan that we're able to identify with priorities on those projects that we want to get accomplished.
Question, I'm getting close to my end at that. How do you plan on fixing the slope failure of the open-channel ravine embankment between Jesse Stone and Helen Barone Avenue? Mr. Guillory?
We've been working...
Does everybody know what we're talking about?
Where the Nord checkpoint is. We've been working with the Corps of Engineers, and we are building a box cover. We, that's roughly 10 by 10 by 150 linear feet. And then we're going to come back and backfill that portion of it. The next phase is to obtain funding in order to build the new road of the, where the pipe carpet is. It's a metal cover, and it's beginning to rust out, and we're going to raise that portion of the road to be above the flood stage of the river which is used when it comes up around elevation 35 feet above sea level. That's when we start having problems with the water coming across the road. And then as it proceeds, then the deterioration starts taking place with the soil. So it is in the plans. One of the questions that had come up about the roads, well, in that area there, we know we have problems with potholes. We have underground saw-based... we know we have problems with potholes, uh we have underground soil based conditions that is that's real poor. And because of all the construction that had taken place since the early nineties, we built uh the dormitories, the apartments, and once we finish completing the demolition of the existing apartments, then we are planning to uh rework the new roads that's, the existing roads that are coming back there. So that's a part of the master plan uh from that standpoint.
Thanks. Let me add one other thing, we were talking about the ravine and uh when we talk about plans, future plans for the university. About a year ago, I met with the uh Urban Forestry Department and when we started looking at looking at the ravine and the condition that we do, that it was in, yeah, you know, how do we clean it up? How do we, you know, how do we make that an integral part of the campus? When you consider it, it's really a a could be a beautiful addition to the campus if it's if it's done correctly. Well, we we approached the Urban Forestry Department, they went and looked at it and realized that there were a lot of of uh trees and vegetation native to Louisiana all through that ravine and that it offered an opportunity for what we call a an urban forest uh education laboratory. We went to DC, met with the uh Director of the U.S. Forest Service and they they've been strong partners with us in the in the Urban Forestry Department. They then funded a sixty thousand dollar study. They agreed on it, they actually came in, we had a a visit with them, they came and reviewed the whole area. Uh they looked at it and felt that it it provided an opportunity for what they again called an urban forestry learning service, a learning lab, outdoor learning lab. Uh so they funded the study. Uh that study has been completed, uh was presented to me a few weeks ago by uh Dr. Abdallah, the Urban Forestry Department. Uh it's identified native trees in that area. It's also developed a plan to go in, clean up that area, uh retain the the trees that are critical and do a walking path, uh you know, have it so that it's it's usable. Uh so students, whether it's whether it's our urban forestry students, whether it's high school students from from around the city or the state coming in interested in urban forestry and what it can do. Uh but the U.S. Forest Service has also indicated a willingness to eventually support us in terms of providing the funds necessary to go in and do that. That's a pretty long uh ravine. It's it's a lot of this just visible uh right against the, you know, the walkway coming up behind the the law school. Uh of course, you know, it goes all the way back and it 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 really is a natural drainage for the city of Baton Rouge uh into the Mississippi River. So there are things we have to do with the Corps of Engineers, uh but we believe that there's an opportunity for that to again be part of of the beautification of Southern University campus. Um I said, the the Forest Service is committed to the project, uh they're, you know, they they've asked us to do the study, we've done that, we've completed it, we've presented to them uh that step, so the next step is go out and seek the phase one funding to start toward looking at at clearing up that area as a beautification project. Last one I have is, is it possible to get scholarship dollars to fund or help fund the education for legacy students? You know, legacy students are those students whose parents are graduated from Southern University. Uh right now, the the assistance available for legacy students is a partial waiver of the out-of-state fees, it's a fifty percent waiver of the out-of-state fees if your parent graduated, if your parent is not a resident of Louisiana but graduated from Southern University. Scholarship dollars, we are, we're constantly uh in search of scholarship dollars. I know that the SGA has done its part in terms of of funding, using some of your fees and through the uh Office of Student Affairs, offering scholarships for Southern University students. Uh we have made an effort on the, at the chancellor's level to increase the amount of scholarship dollars uh that we have available on a need basis. Uh most of you are aware that we have a, you know, twenty fourteen is our senior year. Uh part of that that drive is a chancellor's need-based scholarship fund that we are pushing and and beginning probably in the next two weeks, you'll see a much more harder uh push for monies from alumni, from sponsors, from corporate sponsors, so that we can develop a a really strong scholarship fund for students, not just legacy students, but all students here at Southern University. I mean, all of you know it and and most of you or some of you probably have been up to our office and and have filled out the scholarship applications. And a lot of times we can't do everything that we that we would like to do because of the the lack of a a large source of dollars. The Alumni Association helps, the foundation helps, President Mason has eighteen eighty Society uh that's available, so we're trying to identify all identify all the resources that we have. But we want to make a big, strong effort during this year to to create a really strong scholarship fund to the help, to uh help Southern University students. Uh we probably have a little over a hundred thousand dollars uh that have been contributed uh to that fund right now. And and we're pushing the letters out to uh to contacts and and Ms. Bray and and uh Ms. Fabi is a part of that committee working with us uh from the student aspect, uh but we know that we're, we're gonna make a really strong effort to increase the scholarship dollars available for you uh for this coming academic year and future academic years. I think that's mine.
Okay, how's everybody this evening? Um so I was listening to the questions you asked the chancellor and I think that I can offer a little little insight from where I sit. You know, I'm president of the system and Southern is the only historically black university system in America. And the flagship campus is here in Baton Rouge, where we also have the Community College in Shreveport, we have the four-year school in New Orleans, and we have the law school and the Ag Center here. Now, the world is changing for us. Uh you heard the chancellor talk about our financial issues, that's a national thing. Uh states are getting out of the higher education business and they're making students and parents pay more and more and more uh the cost of education, which means that we have to be much more customer sensitive uh because we have to go out and compete for students. Uh we don't just compete now against historically black universities, we compete against UL Lafayette and UL Hammond. So we really do have to bring our A-game, A-game to the table. Uh to be honest with you, we haven't had our A-game here for a minute, uh for a lot of different reasons, some is the budget cuts. You know, some of it is is really what I call the cumulative effect of politics over time. Uh we saw they have three kinds of people in the system. We have people that know what they're doing and work hard. We have people that uh don't know what they're doing but are willing to learn and work hard. And then we have people that don't give a damn. And we're trying to make sure we find the people that don't give a damn and get rid of them so we can get some better people in here. Now, the um the bigger picture is this, we're trying to build a new Southern on the traditions of the past. Now, we know that in order to deal with your customer service issues, we don't have enough money on every campus to provide the quality of service that you need in certain areas. For example, uh your your information technology, right? Your computer systems. We have uh decent ones in off, on all five of the campuses, but we need one really, really good one in a technology age. So what we're doing is we're combining all of the ones from across the campuses and putting together one good one that'll serve all of the campuses. And that's what this trend, you've heard about transformation? That's what that transformation is. We're trying to find ways to do what we do better with the money that we have to work with. So you're gonna see a centralized information technology department, a centralized human resources department, centralized accounting department, centralized, missing something else in there. But the point is this, it's all the stuff you shouldn't see or worry about or have to try to argue about whether you're getting the services and that, because if they're doing their job, you don't notice it. But you notice it every day because if I asked you whether you love Southern but hate what it does to you, you'd probably say yes. And I hear that from alumni all the time, but that's because we gotta pick up our game and bring it a A-game. So my job is to help the chancellors on all the campuses uh look good, get better, and we're gonna give them the support they need to get that done, okay? Does all of that make sense? Good. So our goal is this, to make a little progress every day. Um and 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 I think we're doing that. You know, we're seeing the IT get a little better every day. We had clean audits for the first time in six or seven years, but that's a little better every day. You've seen those dormitories come down, they sat there for about, what, a decade or something? Longer than that, a triangle. Oh, but they're coming down now. You know, uh five years ago, if you'd said, when are they coming down, nobody would've known. Now we can tell you within three to six months. So you're gonna see a little progress every day so that the value of your degree will be a little more valuable every day, because that's really what it's all about. When you walk out there with a Southern degree, what do people think is worth? And we're gonna make sure that when you walk out of that door tomorrow, the day after, the day after that, it'll be worth a little more and a little more and a little more, okay? If y'all, do y'all have other questions for me? Because I can stay, you know? Do you? No, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, look, we gotta vote on this transformation stuff. I told your president here, uh if y'all don't understand it and you don't know what it is, have me come to talk about it, because we need her to support it, okay? It's all about building a better Southern and 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 the value that degree. And she's a vote on that board, so y'all need to tell her, you know, that this is something that's good for Southern, all right? She worked for y'all just like I did. Okay, good. Any other questions? Anything before I go? All right, God bless the Jaguar Nation.
Okay, my name is Kevin Johnson, I'm the Deputy Administrator for the University Police Department. I handle all the administrative issues and after criminal issues. And the questions I have here are several, and I'll start with this one here. Why does it cost two dollars to make a police report? Well, actually, to make a report doesn't cost anything, but to get a copy of that report does cost two dollars, which by the way is the lowest cost in East Baton Rouge, Paris. Most uh agencies charge ten dollars and some of them charge a dollar page and so on. So to answer that question again, to make a police report does not cost anything, but to get a copy of it, it does, it costs two dollars. Uh it says here, uh are we working on better parking for students? Um if you've been here for a couple of years or so, you've seen the Activity Center uh project, which uh there was another question here about parking, where does the money from tickets go? And that's one of the uh China examples there, where we spent several hundred thousand dollars on that project and that's where that money came from. Uh we also have several other projects slated. One of them is to look at the parking by the stadium and also to restructure the the campus, the center lines, the curves and the other parking areas. So that's, that's one of the things that we're doing. Uh there's another question here about are we gonna increase the number of spaces? Right now, if we look at the Activity Center, uh on any given day, you'll see two or three hundred of these parking spaces and back in the dorm areas, there's uh there's adequate parking there. In the last couple of years, we've increased the number of spaces by adding on the uh parking lot right next to the nursing school, which was a uh a faculty lot, that is now a student lot in that area. So we are doing some things to uh improve the parking on the campus. Let's see. Okay, it says, uh why isn't it that students cannot park at the student union until after hours? Uh the union is one of the centers on the campus, you've got deliveries coming in from the post office. A lot of those spaces over there are designed for the uh employees. That's right in the center of the part of the campus where you have the uh union employees, uh student affairs, uh academics, registrars. You also have uh parents that come in with their children, prospective students to come in and and get their documentation to to join school. So that's why those spaces there are reserved for those items rather than in a parking area. But it is correct, after five o'clock it is open for parking. Okay, is it possible that athletes can get access to park near the facilities or practice field during parking, during practice hours? That's correct. If yours, if your car is registered, even if you stay in the dorms and have a dorm sticker, if you park in the Activity Center parking lot for practice or if you start by the by the stadium, those areas there, you can't park in those areas if you're there for practice. So we talked with uh some of the athletes a couple of years ago and put that into place. Uh why is the strip blocked off uh the night before a football game is extremely inconvenient to residents? Let me ask this question, are we talking about this the strip, the Main Street EC Harrison? Or are we talking about by Reed and White?
EC Harrison.
EC Harrison, okay. That area before a football game is, we have the Jaguar fans come in the night before and to settle for tailgating, and what they do is they block off that area and keep it clear to a certain time to let those people come in, drop off their uh their tailgating uh equipment and to move their vehicles, otherwise it'll just get totally uh blocked up in that area. Uh a couple of ye, well, about a year or so ago, uh they embarked upon a new parking plan for football and that was one of the areas that they looked at. They they resolved these areas, looked at them and uh made that plan to keep those people out of those areas for a certain time so that those tailgaters can come in, because believe it or not, people come in two and three o'clock in the afternoon before a football game. And this year, we really had even more fans, so it really got crowded in there. Okay, that is my last question. Are there any other parking questions? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um when students park, I mean, when student athletes park at the fieldhouse, they do still give a stick?
Yeah, they cannot park at the fieldhouse itself, that's a reserved parking area, but they can park right next to it, the big parking lot by the stadium. They can park there, or if you're doing practice at the Activity Center, they can park there also. But the area right in front of the, right in front of the uh fieldhouse is reserved. It's mostly for the coaches and the other uh employees that work there. Okay, uh if I could just take one quick minute of information, an information item. Um if you will go to the uh SUBR website and click on uh University Police, I encourage everybody to sign up for First Call. First Call is the university's emergency notification system. Uh we've already in newspapers about uh incidents that are taking place on college campuses. Heaven forbid that happens here, but if you go there, it doesn't cost anything, you sign up, it walks you through the uh the uh signup uh procedure, and uh if you get some kind of message, something happens, we will send you out a text message, an email, uh and also a phone call to let you know what's going on at that time. So I encourage you, please, to sign up for First Call. Go to subr.edu, go to police department website, click on it, and you'll see there on the left-hand side, the uh procedures for signing up for that. Thank you.
I have several questions about the menu, so I'll lump them all together. Um Airmark has a national menu and it's uh input information from certified ships, certified shelves, from all apart, all all parts of the country, um meaning in all regions, on east coast, west coast, um north and south. And we have, uh of course, here at Southern University, uh most of our students are here from the south. So uh they're accustomed and we notice that um they're used to having things that are more fried. Uh they enjoy fried food, they enjoy gravies, uh the meatloaf, sweet potatoes. And um we can't serve that every day, so we try to incorporate some of um some items that are different. And they always ask, you know, uh what else can we have? Uh what other what other meat items can we have? I always talk about, okay, we have poultry, we have beef, we have pork, we have seafood. And I ask students, can you tell me another protein? So we can serve it. And no one gives me an answer. So, once you have those four meat items, you have seven meals, I mean, you have seven days, you have two meals, so that's fourteen meals a week, and you have to rotate all those items, they're gonna repeat themselves. So we try to prepare them in different ways so that they won't be prepared the same way all the time. The menu rotates on four four weeks at a time, so uh there are four different menus that we have and they do rotate uh every semester. Uh we have heard from students that have taken our surveys that, yes, you would like to see something different. So uh this coming uh summer and we're we're gonna do some planning where we recognize our students would like to see things that they're accustomed to seeing here in the south. So we have heard you, we understand your comments and we want your suggestions. I have an uh meeting that I do once a month in Mayberry where it's uh dining with the director and it's open to all students to come and attend and um I'm always begging people to come, pulling people uh from the dining halls to come and sit down and talk to me about things that they would like to see on the menu, things that they would like to see change, uh critique what we're doing, ask us questions, and usually five students show up. So we want your input, it helps us to help you and to provide meals that you would like to see. There also is a question about flies. Um our oldest dining hall is done, which is about forty years old, and there is some structural problems there. It is mainly with our plumbing, and so we have a lot of leaks at Dunn. And we have water in areas that is, uh we're constantly trying to repair and um and make the changes necessary, working with the physical plants and uh Dr. Dumas is assisting to get those things taken care of. We have plans to correct those problems. Also, the question comes up, why you know that uh we limit the amount of servings we give when you go to the line? Every serving that we give you and your protein is a fourth of a pound of meat. So if you get two pieces of chicken, that's a fourth of a chicken. You get four, you get a half of a chicken. So think about what your serving size So think about what your serving sizes are. And we allow you to come back as many times as you like. If you'd like to eat a whole chicken, we're okay with it. If you'd like to eat a pound of beef, we're okay with that. But be mindful that the people behind you are in line as well, too. Get you one serving, once you finish eating that, come back and get more. We know every student that comes in our dining hall, at one meal, at lunch or dinner, eats five plates of food. Five plates. And so a fourth of a piece of meat is on every one of those plates. So at lunch and dinner, you're eating a pound, a pound of meat. At every meal. At those, any, any questions? I think that's it for me.
One of the questions came up about the asbestos and demolition project for the residential areas there. I just want you to know and assure you that that was contained according to the rules and regulations, and all encapsulated, stored properly, and removed from that site accordingly. The next item pertain to why the large trash bins. Well, for the past 20 years, we had major construction that was taking place on the campus, anywhere from renovations to new buildings. And naturally, what comes with that is new furniture or new computers. Trash has to be removed from those buildings and disposed of, and we've, we've used the large trash bins in order to take care of that. So as we complete some of the renovations and construction, we shall be reducing the size of those particular containers. In terms of placing smaller trash bins throughout the campus, we have more or less investigating that to determine some of the locations. We have put some out, but we are going to table that again in order to determine where we should, some of your high-traffic areas. And we'll be more than welcome to meet with the SGA at a later date to come up with some recommendations on where we can place those trash cans. The other item, I have several pertaining to campus lighting. We have started a Phase Two campus lighting for the campus. We put in new LED campus lights on some of the roadways and interior-wise. We realize that we have to show some improvements on the wattage for the LED lights. We are constantly surveying the areas at night, some of the older buildings that has incandescent lights, or metal halide, or high-pressure sodium lights. We are planning to have those lamps replaced with new. It's time-consuming, but we are getting there and identifying there. If there are certain areas that you would like to see additional lights there, you know, just let us know. Go through your SGA, and your SGA knows how to contact my department. You'll notice that we have a couple of, probably about eight different 100-foot tower lights that we put up, and we will have those working, hopefully within the next month or so, fully illuminated accordingly. So in terms of lighting issues, just submit that to the SGA, and we will address those.
Okay, I'll start with this question. Do we still have insurance with the university for medical assistance? To answer that question, earlier this year, there was a federal mandate that changed or adjusted the types or amounts of health insurance that universities were required if they elected, if they elected to offer health insurance to their students. There was a certain degree of coverage that had to be offered. We advertised, there was an RFP put out, Vice Chancellor McClinton, Dr. Lorenz, and myself worked together with the Systems Administration to obtain some quotes and some prices to see if it was a feasible option to continue. Because historically, you all have had the student health insurance, I think there was a $15,000 annual limit that included an accidental death benefit. That was about $162 per year, if my memory serves me correct. And Dr. Lorenz, you can chime in if I'm incorrect. I think the least expensive bid that we got would have been, to maintain the coverage, the minimum amount of coverage required, would have been about $1,100 a semester in addition to your current tuition fees. So instead of putting that on top of the steadily increasing cost of attendance with tuition fees, housing, and all the other things that go along with that, we elected to expand the services that are currently, were currently made available at the Student Health Center. The hours were extended, you can now go to the Student Health Center on nights and weekends. Some of the services that were initially included under the health coverage, such as lab work, certain X-rays, we have memorandums of understanding with healthcare agencies here in Baton Rouge who offer those services. So we, and we increased the health coverage cost, the, the cost that you incurred was in addition to $100. So we thought that was more logical. It was something that, that pained us greatly to do it, because historically, students have relied heavily on the health insurance, and often cases, that was, that was the only health insurance that was available. But in the best interest of you all and the overall institution in terms of enrollment and your needs, we went ahead and passed on the, on the opportunity to offer that insurance because of the cost that would have been associated. So no, you do not have health insurance, but the services offered by the infirmary of the Student Health Center have been, have been expanded significantly to try to accommodate you and your needs here on campus. Next question. This may have been a question for Dr. Lorenz, but it says, are there any future plans in terms of getting another live mascot? If so, what is the approximate timeframe that this will commence? I think I'm correct when I say that there are currently no plans or intentions to replace Lacumba, who was our last living mascot. The requirements, I don't know if y'all are familiar with Mike the Tiger's Habitat? It's a multimillion-dollar facility, and there are certain rules and guidelines that are expected from institutions or entities that house these animals, that you have to have suitable facilities in order to, to house them and maintain them. And our primary concern at this time is to ensure that your academic and your residential facilities that our students live in are second to none before we begin investing in an animal habitat. Next question. Kind of a statement, I appreciate Student Affairs involving students in the hiring process of the Associate Vice Chancellor, which is at the final stages, by the way. However, what are other ways that Student Affairs will incorporate students in administrative decisions? It's kind of an open question, not exactly certain what specifically was meant, but I mean, Student Affairs is what it is. Since I have been here, my team and, the team in Student Affairs have tried to ensure that students felt a part of everything that was going on, to cater everything that we do towards your wants and needs and your desires, to ensure that you have a satisfactory matriculation here at Southern University as it relates to student life. There is no decision that we make. Of course, there will be administrative decisions that don't, you always don't agree with, but when appropriate, or as most, as much as humanly possible, we will consult you all before we make decisions that affect you. I couldn't understand that one. And this last one says, why are meal plans mandatory for students that live on campus? Why can't it be optional? And Ms. Brown, feel free to chime in if you like. Recently, we just went through a system-wide effort, Economies of Scale. You heard President Mason talking about transformation, where the food service contract was bidded out, awarded to Airmark again. That's just the nature of, of the way it goes in higher education. Typically, when we, when these vendors present us with proposals and say that we can offer you this service for X amount of dollars, they, in advance of making a proposal to us, they always ask us, how many students do you have living on your campuses? How many students do you have that participate in commuter meal plans? What's your overall student enrollment? And the proxies that they give us are based on the information that we provide them with. So it would be unfair to a vendor to tell them that we have approximately 1,800 students living on campus and make the food service enrollment in the meal plan optional, and only 200 people take advantage of it. That puts us, puts the company at a disadvantage and limits what they will be able to avail, to make available to those students who participate in it. So it's, it's kind of, I guess, understood when you enter into these types of agreements that they have an expectation of the university in terms of us being able to provide to them a certain number of students to fund their operations and what they're expected to do. And there are instances, which are not many, for medical exceptions, that are reviewed by our Student Health Center. If there is, if there's any reason that the campus dining department cannot meet your needs, if there's a certain diet or dietary restraint, or any particular reason that's medically related, then you can apply a request, permission to be exempted from the meal plan. But aside from that, all students that reside on campus and residential facilities have been and will be expected to participate in the meal plan. And those are my questions. Thanks.
Good evening again. First question. What will be done is, what will be done as far as maintenance workers not responding to reasonable time? Dr. Lorenz earlier stated that the university's been faced with budget cuts over the past several years, and that has impacted the staff on campus. And some of the maintenance workers in the residential area, of course, were laid off, and we're in the process of now replacing those reparations to address the issues. But of course, you have to go through the civil service process, and it's not a very competitive base, and it's hard to find good employees to replace or fill those positions with the pay grade that they're offered. So we are in the process of hiring more maintenance personnel to fill those positions to address the issues with responding in a reasonable time. Second question is, in the university departments, what could be done to be assurance that the laundry rooms are consistently clean? And I might address that campus-wide. The students live in the residence facilities, and it's just like when you live at home, you keep your facilities clean where you live. So it's pretty much, we have staff on campus that work Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, and we have made adjustments to the custodial staff to help keep the residential facilities clean throughout the week. But over the several, I guess, since the students have returned, I've noticed in the evenings that the students place trash in front of the buildings. They place trash, large trash bags in a small trash can. If the trash bin is full of small trash can outside of the building, they place a trash bag next to the trash can. Mr. Eli and Mr. Hillary spoke that they are, they have large bins outside of every residential facility, and those trash bins are for your large trash bags that are in your dormitories. It's not for you to place your large trash bags in the small trash cans. So you have to take pride in where you live to make sure that the residential facilities are clean. If there's something that we can do to assist to keep those facilities clean that you think we're not doing, my door is always open. I'm in the university departments, my office is always open. I see several students that have come in to see me and talk to me about various issues. See several of my RAs are here tonight. So we always strive to keep the facilities to the best that we can for you all to live in. And last question, I really don't understand, why are residential assistants most harassing? Don't understand that question, but they're charged with a job, and they have a schedule that they abide by, and rooms that they have to perform, and they have a guideline that they have to live up to. So, how many RAs are here tonight? Please stand up. Stand up. Former RA, stand up. These are students that are here to help you. They live with you, along with you, so they're not here to harass you. They are here to make sure that you all abide by the limits of facilities, rules and regulations. So that, so, you know, they're not being harassing, they're just doing their job. Thank you.
We just poured concrete for a new parking lot next to the council's. And it happened over the weekend, but students have just taken upon themselves to figure that they can go in and start writing graffiti into the concrete when we had barricaded it off. So it's all about taking pride in this campus.
My first question is, could Financial Aid make an effort to inform students of their status, especially if verification is the issue? Yes, we can. Initially, our, our communications are going through your S U B R email accounts, which I know many students are not using to its maximum capacity. We would like students to understand that your S U B R email account is your official email account, and correspondence that come from the Financial Aid Office will be directed to that email account first. The other thing is that we want students to refer to Banner Self Service in order to identify the items that our office needs. We understand that many times students go to their Banner Self Service account, but primarily just to check on classes. That portal also provides you with real-time information as it pertains to the Financial Aid Office. So we urge you to check your S U B R email account and to log on to Banner Self Service under the Financial Aid tab for updated information. Another question is, why does Financial Aid take so long? The reality is, everybody's Financial Aid process isn't the same. Most students have different circumstances, and that requires additional information from our office in order to determine your eligibility. Historically, the challenge that the Financial Aid Office has experienced is that many of our students are very creative when it comes to their Financial Aid process. Once you exercise some of this creativity, we are then forced to verify the information that you have provided to us. The verification process is not determined by the Financial Aid Office. The verification process is not determined by the Financial Aid Office, that is determined by the Department of Education. They select a number of applicants based on the school code that they believe that the school should verify that the information is accurate. As I mentioned before, the creativity. If it is, for some reason, you enter something that creates a disparity from what you submitted a year before, and the Department of Education believes that the school should take another look, it will be categorized as conflicting information, and we will then have to request the information from you. So in all cases, it's not a 100% verification process, but we also still need to get that information in order to determine your eligibility. So if you submit the information timely, you submit what is requested of you, and it's consistent with what was on your application, I can guarantee you that your Financial Aid process will be completed timely. If it is you want to exercise some creativity, or you are tardy in submitting the information to us, yes, that does prolong your process. So please understand that everybody's situation is, is different, and we take it on a case-by-case basis, but we would like to see everyone's Financial Aid process as quickly as possible, because, believe me, I don't want to be in the lines with you either. The other thing, the other question is, how can communication skills between the Financial Aid Office and students be improved? As I mentioned before, the email is our primary form of communication. However, I do urge all students to not only identify being Financial Aid Counselors, but to make an appointment and sit down and speak to that person. I think if you're more familiar with the process and you're more comfortable sharing what your particular situation is with your counselor, you can pretty much get all your questions answered, and we can complete your process in a timely manner. The last question I have is... The last question I have is, "Why are the book awards not going to be issued every semester?" This is not a true statement. The book awards are offered every semester, provided you have excess funds available in your account. We can issue a book voucher that you can remit at the bookstore. Thank you.
Okay, I have one question here. Will Bruce, our Director of Athletics. I've got one question here, and the question is, "How can we, as a university, get students involved in supporting all sports, particularly women's sports?" And to speak generally, there's a responsibility we have as an athletic department, including administrators, student athletes, and coaches. And there's a responsibility that students have in terms of being involved. And I'll just kind of go through those generally and try to offer what I guess is a best guess at how we can get those things accomplished. The athletics department's responsibility is outreach. So we have to, our student athletes and our coaches have to reach out to the student body, to the community. So, you know, if we've got games coming up, particularly for women's sports, we encourage the coaches, and the coaches then encourage the student athletes, for them to go out, when they're in their classrooms, when they're in their circles of friends, when they're in the residence halls, to let people know that there are games coming up to encourage them to attend. So that's part of our responsibility. Scheduling, making sure that we highlight our most important and exciting matchups that will have that kind of an interest. Athletic success, so making sure that we field competitive teams, teams that are winning more than they lose and competing for championships. And we certainly had success almost across the board in the last couple of years in that particular area. Promotion, putting up posters, having giveaways for students, engaging on social media. And we've done a lot more in those areas in the past couple of years. And budget permitting, as we are able to continue increasing revenues, we hope to do more in that area. And then event management, finding ways to involve students at the actual events. So providing you with good seats, providing you opportunities to participate in contests, win prizes, and awards, or be recognized. And we're open to that, and we've done a lot more in that regard. We want to do more as well. As far as students' responsibility, students have responsibility to be engaged. So as students, and you being here tonight is a testament to that. You know what's going on on campus, you're taking advantage of those opportunities. And athletics, we just try to provide entertainment and opportunity for you to express your pride in Southern University. So there's a responsibility for students to be engaged, and know what events are, and to attend those events, and to be excited, to cheer loudly, et cetera. You have a responsibility to ask for what you want. I do my best to engage with students, alumni, fans, and supporters on social media in my daily interactions. I try to be present on campus and not just remain holed in my office all day. But I get a lot of requests from students, alumni, et cetera. Believe it or not, some of those requests do get met. We can't meet all of them, obviously. If you come up to me and ask, "You can start at point guard in a game on Saturday." Chances are, Coach Banks isn't going to allow you to do that. But if it's a reasonable request, if we have the budget to accommodate it, or we have the means to meet that request, and it's something that we think is going to get students excited, we're interested in doing it. And finally, there's a responsibility that students have to share your experience with friends. If you've attended a game, you had a good time, won a prize, you got crawled down onto the field or onto the court, and you had a nice experience, go and tell someone about it. If you have a roommate that doesn't typically attend events, if you have classmates that you know don't attend events, bring them along. They might have a good time as well, they might share that experience as well with others. So we have a responsibility in common to increase attendance at events. But I will say that I'm actually quite pleased with attendance here. We've set attendance records in volleyball and in soccer in the past couple of years. Football attendance is strong, basketball attendance has improved considerably. And a lot of that has to do with students. We had several football games this year where we were looking for places to put you guys, you know, after you filled up the student section, which was roughly 3,500 seats. So I'm pleased with student turnout, and always improve. And if there's anything that we can ever do that you think is an idea worth us exploring, we're open to the idea.
Okay, that was the last of the questions. I also got a question, and it's asked, "What are the long-term benefits that SGA offers?" And I can tell you that in a recent study, it said that colleges didn't get students ready for, as it pertains to interdisciplinary skills, as far as talking to other people and being relatable. And I believe SGA helps you with that. It helps you to work with a group of people that you may have never met or never thought, and may have no interest together. You all might have two different majors, but it shows you how you can work together with people from various spectrums. Also, it gives you a lot of opportunities to meet a lot of people. I have very great relationships with everyone on this panel. And I know that in my future, if I never, ever needed anything, I could call them and ask them for it, and they would be so ready to help me. At least I would hope so. Okay, now, do we have any administrators who want to give brief remarks?
Yeah, sure.
I'll be brief, I know y'all want a good idea. But I want to thank Ms. Breck, our Student Government Association, for putting this together. I think it's a great idea. Sitting there and looking at, you know, we have 6,000 students on this campus. We have maybe 30, which would be, what, less than 1% of the population turning out? But I think it's critical. I think if you can get back and share with your fellow students that the only way we can make this campus better is through communication. If we don't hear from you, and you don't hear from us, then everybody's just going about their business complaining, and nothing ever gets done. So we have to hear from you, you have to be aware of what your needs or what your concerns are, and go back and share that with your students. And one last thing, and we talked about federal aid, and we talked about student loans. I've been reading a magazine this morning, Bloomberg Business Week, and it talked about the next big bubble, the next big financial bubble that's going to burst, that's going to create problems for this country. And that bubble is student loans. I know that it's very difficult to finance your education. I know that it's very attractive to try and go out and get as much money as you can for those purposes. But I think what I'd like to do is work with the SGA and Student Affairs and Financial Aid to give you, I think, maybe more awareness of exactly what you're facing when you graduate. You know, look at it, this article had a young lady who graduated with $170,000 in loan. Couldn't afford to move out of her house, you know, was paying over $1,000 or $2,000, $3,000 a month in student loans. Student loans don't go away. You know, it's going to be there with you, and that's what they're concerned about. It's whether it's federal loans, whether it's subsidized loans, whether it's bank-backed loans. You know, think about it, we have to do a better job of preparing you. We have to do a better job of making sure that college is affordable. But we also have to do a better job of making you aware of what it does. And it's incumbent upon you, if you're going to come in here and we know we have to rely on student loans, let's get out as quickly as possible, all right? Quicker you get out, the less you owe when you go out to go out and start earning money. Less of your money will be going towards paying back a loan that can go towards a car, an apartment, clothes, you know, those kinds of things that you're here for, okay? So I just want to throw that out. I think it's something that we have to do. And I'm open to, you know, to some feedback on how we can do that and some things we can do in terms of financial literacy. The last thing I want to say is that I like this format, but I know there are a lot of things that are out there that you may not have brought up that you may have thought about. Please feel free to send me an email, okay? Shoot me a text, whatever you need. Share those things with me, share your ideas with me, share your concerns with me, and let's continue in dialogue, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Lorenz.